I now call the June 21st, 2016 Regular Council Meetings to order. Would council members please to note your presence by compressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Okay. Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the June 7th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on June 15th, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Haley. Corrections. Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the June 21st, 2016 Bills and Claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Johns. Any abstentions? Make sure, hang on. Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Casper City Council has initiated the Casper Municipal Court Alcohol Program in November of 2012 with the specific purpose of reducing the incidence of impaired driving in the City of Casper and surrounding areas. The court has been effective in adjudicating firsts and second time DUI offenders by imposing firm, consistent, and effective sentences with highly structured, effective intervention. The City of Casper has been awarded a Leadership Award from the Governor's Council on Imperad Driving for the success of its alcohol court program. At this time, I would like to present this award to Judge of the City Alcohol Court, Judge Nakbar. Thank you.
Yeah, I do. I just want to say that this award really belongs to the people of the City of Casper because the alcohol court is not me, it's the council, it's the city attorney, it's the police department, the city manager, and all of the citizens who support the program. This really belongs to the City of Casper, and we are making a difference. In the years that we have been running the alcohol court, we've gone from over 500 DUIs a year to under 300 DUIs a year. And I think that's a significant difference, so we are making a difference. So I'll accept this, but it's not for me. It's the court, it's the council, and all those involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out its business by three types of actions: by ordinance, resolution, and by minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify local law, whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for council to carry out its business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council, and there is a process for the public as well as council to pull an item from consent. Council will now hold previous scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue, and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to speak either in favor or against the issue, and the council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. Consideration of this item will be by resolution. I now declare the public hearing for the consideration of the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget adjustments. City Attorney Bill Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. We have two exhibits for this item, correspondence from Cassia Smith to V.H. McDonald dated June 13th, 2016, and exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated June 15th, 2016.
City Manager McDonald, do you have a report?
I do, Your Honor. The Wyoming Municipal Budget Act prohibits the expenditure or encumbrance of any money in excess of the amounts provided in the budget for each department. To comply with this requirement, City Council may authorize budget adjustments periodically. Casper typically, twice a year, we evaluate the budgets to see if we need adjustments. At mid-year, we do that for capital. At year-end, we focus more on operations to see if we need adjustments for unplanned events such as conditions we didn't know about, simple budget errors, or, as you'll see later, available funding, particularly grant funding that came available after the adoption of the budget. For fiscal year 2016, the year-end adjustments staff is requesting is $2,584,528, consisting of $551,982 increase to the general fund to fund the general fund departments and general fund dependent funds for the voluntary retirement offer that was made to employees and to increase the municipal band tax distribution due to higher than anticipated property tax received, which is legally obligated to the band. Police grant funds increased $164,793, and that is for grant funding that was not awarded until after the beginning of the year. Weed and Pest Fund increased $19,536,000 to restore funding for a salary of the Wyoming Extension Outreach Coordinator that was originally cut from the budget. Municipal Golf Course Fund increased $33,388 to fund retirement incentive and accrued leave payouts for eligible employees. Casper Ice Arena increased $10,641, again to fund the voluntary retirement offer and accrued leave payouts. Casper Events Center increased $200,951 to provide funding for increased cost of shows that were signed and brought on after the year. We don't know the extent of which when we start the year, and provide retirement, funding for the retirement setting program in that fund also. The Fleet Maintenance Fund increased $323,713 to buy additional vehicle supplies. We don't know what those will be any given year, and we had more than we budgeted to cover the cost of a casualty loss that was charged appropriately to the maintenance fund, a large piece of equipment that was damaged and later paid for with insurance, and again to fund retirement incentive payouts for eligible employees. Building and Structures Fund increased $37,067 to fund the voluntary retirement offer and accrued leaves for eligible employees. Property and Liability Fund increased $444,528 for non-personnel expenses incurred for firefighting operations and city property damage, loss, and cleanup from the station fire, the Coal Creek Fire, and to fund retirement incentives and accrued leave payouts for eligible employees. Water Fund increased $488,929 to fund the retirement incentive for employees and to fund an unplanned street reconstruction water line. And last is the Water Treatment Plant Fund increased $300,000 to fund additional chemicals needed and additional electricity needed for higher water demand and production than was anticipated. Funding for these adjustments comes from $1,387,114 of unanticipated revenue and $1,197,414 of reserves.
Thank you. And just in general, we would characterize these budget adjustments by state statute. We have to balance our budget, so when unanticipated things come up, we have to adjust it so that the accounting is correct and we don't go over budget. Is that right?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. All right. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget adjustments to please approach the lectern. Speaking in favor of the budget adjustments. No one to speak in favor? Are you sure? All right. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget adjustments to please approach the lectern. Speaking in opposition to the budget adjustments. Welcome, Mr. Rollins.
I'm Keith Rollins, I'm for the South District. I guess at this point is the time to talk about adjustments in the budget. I think there need to be additional adjustments to be made, and that being additional spending cuts. We need to get rid of the spending of the buses. If it's in the budget, we may or may not consider actually canceling the budget of the buses by definitely spending for the new ones. Because if the economy gets worse, we'll slide the buses, and then we decide, you know, we really can't afford to operate these buses. In a sense, if we did both of them five months ago, this doesn't make sense. I think let the buses operate the way they're operating now, and then if the economy improves, then buy the buses. Don't buy the buses now. I also think we need to make an adjustment of adding pay cuts across the board for city workers. Something above, anybody who makes, let's say, about $9, $10 an hour, give them a 5% pay cut. I'm sure most of the employees working for the city are intelligent and realize many other people are taking pay cuts, in some cases, 100% pay cuts. If you're not willing to make a 5% sacrifice, I really don't want them to work for the city. It shows irrational progress to the economy. My opinion, anybody that doesn't want to take a 5% pay cut, aye, there's the door, you're gone. I'm sure you all heard of the governor me making a proposal that would cut it over $200 million in the state. He's laying off 677 employees in the state. So things at the top are clearly getting worse. You do have the advantage, though, is the natural gas prices in the last two weeks have soared. They were like $2.52 today in Omaha. So you do have that advantage if they have soared. That's basically because we're getting the 90-degree weather. Whether how long it lasts, it's hard to say. We do have the, on the flip side of coin, is coal is getting worse. Pbody came out with a financial yesterday reports to court. A disaster, awful report, awful report. It's getting worse on that side. Oil is stabilizing, which you have to look at these when you're making your budget. You're not working in a vacuum here. This data is available to all of you online. You need to continue to look at this. Going forward, things may get worse, or they could get better. But we need to have this balance and assume and negative because of the fact that we really can't halfway through, we just can't raise taxes. We don't even need to make drastic cuts. And that's not good. When you're actually six months in, all of a sudden you realize, really, our revenue is plunging here. All of a sudden, you're weighing up here, weighing up here, cutting back here, cutting back there. But you really don't want any of those cuts because those are priority issues. You wish you would have never spent something three months ago like buying the buses. Don't buy the buses, don't make these other expenditures. You really don't need road improvement, you know, pavement, painting lines on the road for bicycles for $300,000. If that's a priority, fine, but that can wait. Not this year, maybe another year. First of all, no one ever pays them, you know, they drive them there, you know. There's another city that drives them all the time. They're driving them all the time. To be honest, I live in New York City and also live here. This council reminds me of the old liberal, whacked-out liberals of the city council in New York City. They spend, spend, spend like crazy, and that's what you guys do. Irrational spending. What's up next? You guys are banning handguns and rifles in the city limits also? I mean, this is what's approaching coming. You guys are coming just on New York City council members. Six of you are up for elections this year. I hope the voters vote all six of you up. One of you is running for the House in Wyoming. I hope that person does not make it either, because another base factor. You really need to take a more pragmatic approach. Don't spend money for them. Who last year, when revenue was slopping, you're spending money for the parking lot launch? That was another mistake. Spend, spend, spend. You don't have this class of thing, you're spending money. Total irrational approach. You need to make cuts. You need to make adjustments in this budget right now. And at this part of the hearing, this is what we talked about, making further cuts. You need to make them, or you will be suffering. But in this case, you'll probably be speaking at the election next year because you won't have a council.
Duly noted. Questions or comments for Keith Rollins? Anyone else to speak in opposition of the budget for the fiscal year 2015-2016? There being no one else to speak for or against the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget adjustments? I'm going to do it. I now declare public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize fiscal year 2015-2016 budget adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Discussion.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McDonald, but all of the matters that are included in these budget adjustments have already gone through this council and have been voted on in a public meeting, and we're really just after the fact, after having made these decisions, making the budget balance.
Your Honor, these specific adjustments have not gone to council yet. This is the first time you see them, but they're part of the whole budget that... Excuse me for that. But they're part of the whole budget that you've seen all year long and the budget reports that you've seen all year long.
Councilman Schlogger, and then Councilman Hopkins.
I just wanted to clarify my memory. Our new budget that we are enacting was 36% reduction in cost savings that we shot for. Is that correct?
The bottom-line budget was reduced 38%, 37% because of a lot of capital project load from 2014-2015. So a lot of the changes of that 38% number on the next item will be, is driven by the change in capital.
Okay, and a follow-up, Your Honor?
Yeah.
If I recall correctly, these projects were already earmarked from the past, and really, we have to finish and follow through with those?
Yes, Your Honor.
So, thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yeah, just to be clear, this is our second go-around in adjusting, making budget adjustments. As V.H. mentioned, we did one earlier in the year. We eliminated some salary increases early in the year, and this is the second time we have done this, and this is the norm. So this is budget adjustments, not next year's budget.
Anyone on the council want to address the hair-on-fire liberal spend crazy characterization that was placed before us?
I don't see smoke anywhere.
Okay. Sure.
I'm not going to comment on that. I tend to have some hard time getting, figuring out issues and explaining that out. Sometimes I babble, so I'll try to do my best. I want to say, V.H. and our city manager and the budget staff, and the whole staff and people that work for the city did a tremendous job of presenting to us what we needed to do to continue moving the city forward. So they are commended for what they do. Our city manager is the right person for this position at this right time to help us through this, and we're moving forward in that. And I think the confidence, the utmost confidence should be in the city as far as city manager McDonald has done, and the prudence and the pragmatism that we have tried to work with at this level with all of us. The conversations that we had, the open communication that we have is better probably at any time in the last four to five years. This council has worked better in that, and the utmost confidence, and I stand by that. And I stand by the budget office that did the work for us and led us through this, and the leadership of V.H. and the work that he did. So, nice job.
Thank you. Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. I suppose I'll just kind of address the same thing as Councilman Pacheco did as well. You know, we have these meetings to kind of help make these decisions based on data from our city staff. And so to mirror kind of what Councilman Pacheco said, you know, they did a lot of work in trying to present these things and figure out pragmatic ways to cut our budgets without loss of providing the services that we need to the city. So, you know, we got the numbers, and if we do end up in one of these financial exigencies, and I'm sure we'll be back here. Now, Mr. Rollins, I do appreciate your comments, and, you know, these are things that we're always looking at. But we sat in through a lot of meetings with our staff and telling us why they're spending the money, where it's going, and what their plans are for cuts in the future. And this is where we're at today, and I'm sure we'll be looking at different things in the future. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question for city manager McDonald. This 38%, 37% figure that was quoted by Heather Richards at the Casper Star Tribune, is this reflective of just mostly capital monies and perhaps just shifting that around as we prioritize? Is that a fair characterization?
Your Honor, it's a comparison of different years with a lot of capital project load. For example, the $24 million of 1% 14 allocation. The way budgeting and governmental accounting works, that turns into $48 million of budget because it's accounted for in two funds, the fund collected and then the fund expended. So you collect it, you transfer it out of the collection fund, you transfer that into the expending fund, and then you expend it. So there's a lot of capital load when capital activity goes on. So that 38% decrease reflects the change in that capital activity. A lot of it...
Point of order, Your Honor. I think we're having a little trouble here making a distinction between the budget adjustment discussion and the fiscal year 17 budget discussion. And I think since this is the matter before us, the budget adjustments for the fiscal year that is about to close, we should keep our comments focused on this matter, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss our opinions about the fiscal year 17 budget. And the next item is before us. And Mr. Rollins, your comments were also really related more to the fiscal year 17 budget that we're about to discuss, I think. And so I think we should dispense with the budget adjustments and then get on to the real serious matter of the fiscal year 17 budget. I'm not that the budget adjustments aren't serious, but I think we're getting these things confused.
Right, and that's very helpful clarity. Thank you. Any more questions or comments? I got one more. This council is not entertaining any ideas of regulating the size of your soft drinks or who or where gets to carry firearms. That's quite frankly above our purview, and I see that those are really good examples of regulation out of control, so many would consider me a liberal, but it ain't true. Ain't true.
But New York City is a great place to visit.
It is. But I don't like anybody telling me how many ounces of soda I can drink. Anyway. Any more discussion? Any more amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Consideration of this item will be by resolution. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the adoption of fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. City Attorney Bill Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Cassia Smith to V.H. McDonald dated June 14th, 2016, and exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated June 15th, 2016.
City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, presented tonight for the city council's consideration is the adoption of the fiscal year 2017 proposed budget. Before I start on the details, I thank department heads for their efforts in putting together this budget, and Kath Smith, the budget administrator, and Kirk Gunderson, the accountant, for their efforts to prepare a budget in a year that was a little bit more than challenging. For fiscal year 2017, the city's total revenue budget is $148,350,301, and the total expenditure budget is $155,414,000, excuse me, $155,414,251. And both those numbers are inclusive of internal transactions within the city.
Could we go over those numbers again? The first number was 144...
$148,350,301 revenue budget, expenditure budget, $155,414,251.
Thank you.
The expenditure budget consists of the general fund, which supports general operations. That budget is $45,345,069. Capital project funds, those funds account for capital-directed revenue, including optional 1 cent number 15 currently, and the expenditures of those funds. The budget for those, the total budget for those funds is $19,496,589. The enterprise funds, the enterprise funds consist of two groups of funds, the utility enterprise funds such as water, sewer, sanitation, bail fill, wastewater, and I think that's all of them. And then the leisure service enterprise funds, Event Center, Hogan on Golf, aquatics, and I'm probably missing a couple of those. The total enterprise fund budget is $59,312,732. Special revenue funds, those are funds that have, the revenue is specified for specific purposes. That includes things like the Community Development Grant Block, Community Development Block Grant Funds, CDBG. I can get the initials better, the acronym better than the title. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, a lot of those funds that are federally or state-provided for specific purposes. And that budget is $6,875,266. Debt Service Fund is a small fund that we use to support assessment districts when we create them. It's a capital-related fund, very small budget, $1,092. The Internal Service Funds, those are funds that provide services internally to other operations of the city. Those include buildings and structures that supports buildings, fleet maintenance that supports our rolling stock and fleet. IT is an internal service fund. IT is an internal service fund. The total of that budget, those budgets are, is $8,414,196. And lastly, the trust and agency funds, those are funds of money we hold in trust for specific purposes, and those include the employee health insurance fund, the perpetual care fund, and the like. The total of those funds is $15,969,307. Again, the total expenditures is $1,555,414,251. Because of the duplication of transfers and expenses, we typically take out the intergovernmental transactions that we charge between funds. That total is $26,325,20. So the net budget, net expenditure budget was $129,381,731. And these amounts include the cost for the voluntary retirement offer made to employees that closed after the budget review, and we finalized those numbers last week, and these numbers reflect that.
Thank you.
For fiscal year 2017, $7,63,950 is supposed to be spent from various funds' reserves. The components of this amount are general fund, spending $954,997,000 of reserves for operations, capital projects fund, spending $444,428, again, not again, but for capital. The enterprise funds, again, water, sewer, those funds that have a lot of capital expenditures, we will be spending down reserves in the enterprise funds of $4,026,176. The special revenue funds will spend down $334,304 of capital and for operations. The debt service fund, that's the small fund again, will actually, has a positive number of $39,077 because we receive assessment payments through the year, and that will actually increase. Internal service funds will spend down $44,599, again, for capital. And lastly, the trust and agency fund will spend $2,187,359. And that is, $1.6 million of that is a non-cash expense in the health insurance fund to recognize post-employment healthcare benefits that we pay as we go, but it's an accounting non-cash expense, and the rest are accumulation of small losses, small spending of reserves that the other funds will incur. Again, for a total spend down of reserves of $7,63,950. The city of Casper's budget focuses on the general fund because the operations of that fund provide the general services to the community, relying on general revenue sources such as sales taxes, which is the most significant single source, and mineral taxes, both of which are state-shared revenues. Also include the general fund revenues of property taxes, franchise fees, as well as other taxes and charges for services. Preparation of the fiscal year 2017 proposed budget was done during the beginning of an economic downturn, the extent of which is unknown. What is known is that for fiscal year 2016, general sales taxes that fund general services again began declining in June of 2015. We started addressing the decline in June of 2015 by implementing a hiring freeze just after that to start anticipate this downturn. The result of that sales tax downturn for 2016 is the total collections of sales taxes will be down approximately 30 percent. However, to note, and as you see in the sales tax charts, the last few months of the year since February, the deficit has been around a 40 percent. But it is leveled out, it appears. So we've not lost ground in the last several months, although the total number for those months is lower than the total for the year. The general fund expenditure budget proposed for the adoption of, for fiscal year 2017 is 13 percent or $6.8 million less than the fiscal year 2016 estimated budget and $10.9 million less than the fiscal year 16 adopted budget. And this includes approximately $540,000 of one-time costs for the voluntary retirement offer, and that helps generate savings in the future years by reducing personnel costs. As was the case for the hiring freeze implemented in fiscal year 16 and for the voluntary retirement offer, vacant positions in police, fire, and utility operations, frontline positions were or will be refilled in the foreseeable future to provide continued response times and service levels. Retaining as many possible frontline positions in all other operations will continue to be the focus, with efforts to reassign any management and supervisory responsibilities resulting from vacancies rather than refilling. The prominent feature of the 2017 budget is the establishment of a long-term fiscal plan for the general fund. We were able to do that because of the reserves in general fund that's been made available. Unfortunately, approximately 17 years ago, the city council established a reserve fund, a reserve policy for the general fund that provided a prudent level of reserves for the boom and bust economy the city exists in. With those available reserves, the long-term financial plan identifies a glide path for the reduction of expenditures over approximately 10 years without making abrupt changes in services. That's not to say services, service changes won't be necessary, but they can be planned and communicated and anticipated, and everything we can do, the time, the time buys you to deal with those. The city's comprehensive and multiple-year, multi-year capital improvement plan is continued in fiscal year 2007 proposed budget. Again, capital versus operating, capital is for those infrastructure asset expenditures where we maintain our buildings, our underground infrastructure, our paths, our parks, our fields, and rolling stock and equipment. Needed infrastructure, construction projects, and equipment purchases funded by optional one cent tax are budgeted in accordance to the citizen survey, taken to guide the expenditures of that revenue source. This source of funding is critical for the community's infrastructure, capital facilities, and equipment. However, as with general sales tax revenue, optional one cent sales tax revenue has declined. Accordingly, the schedule of when projects and equipment purchases were to have been made for this funding, from this funding, has been adjusted in order for expenditures not to exceed revenue. Local government cannot stop delivering services when economic conditions decline, unless those declines are catastrophic. What a local government must do during a decline is prioritize service levels and adjust to available resources, which in itself is a challenging, is challenging because the city is defined geographically, and service levels may not necessarily be correlated to population. As demonstrated by the contents of the fiscal year 2017 proposed budget, city staff and I are keenly aware of the flexibility required in managing the city's resources for the delivery of services. The city will continue to have budget challenges in at least the next few years, if not beyond. Consequently, depending on month-to-month revenue and expenditure performances, I will make the necessary adjustments that are within my authority to address any continued decline in revenue, and will seek city council action for those items under its purview. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilman Haley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager McDonald, in the last agenda item, we had budget adjustments related to the voluntary retirement program. And in this, we see spending of budget money for the voluntary retirement program. Could you clarify for me which fiscal year the spending for the voluntary retirement program is occurred?
Your Honor, the spending, the spending will occur June 30th in this year. The reference to next year is how it affects reserves and beginning reserves. If I was unclear about that.
Is that because of the continuing health cares?
Well, the reference, the reference to next year's changes is because next year's when the salary costs are freed up, and it compares the difference between this year's personnel expenses and next year's personnel expenses. Excuse me, may I jump ahead? And the health insurance question?
That's, that's helpful. Are we, are we talking about $500,000 to incentivize retirement?
The number came out $540,000 this year for the general fund and general fund dependent.
Okay.
The enterprise funds all pay for their, pay for their own, and some special revenue funds pay for their own.
Okay.
And the general fund doesn't carry the load for those.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would request that we ask VH to put his explanation verbatim in the notes for tonight, if that's appropriate for you.
Sure. Yeah.
It's a good explanation, and I appreciate it.
Speaking of, should, should we hand these to reporters?
It's a, it's a, it's a document.
Okay.
I would just state for the record, we mark it as exhibit number one and attach it as part of the minutes.
Okay. We are going to, do we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay. Okay. Exhibit number one, the budget consideration paper drafted by VH McDonald. Yeah.
VH, could you talk a little bit about the number of employees that work for the city and where we are with our staffing now versus, I don't know, just maybe at the beginning of the fiscal year, it's just currently ending, so we can give people a sense of how we're trying to reduce personnel costs through these programs or through these actions.
Someone figures out how to have a smaller budget document, I'm all for that. It's a lot of, a lot of information. For fiscal year 17, we were authorized at 564 positions as a total. And for fiscal year 17, we're dropping that down to 200, or dropping that down to 540, 24 positions less. And that was our goal for our retirement was, our goal for our retirement was about half of those eligible and 21 for the general fund. Some positions we're carrying over and refilling, but we're making some pretty significant changes in staff.
Thank you.
Follow-up?
Yeah.
Do either of those numbers include positions that via attrition are open, but we chose not to fill through the hiring freeze?
Yes.
So the actual number of employees is less than the amount, the number budgeted?
Yes.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Is there any reason for the citizens to be concerned that city services will be negatively affected since we're trying to do the same amount of work for the same number of people with fewer employees? Are you satisfied that we'll be able to do our job with these reductions?
For the next year, I am. It's a stretch for the, for the employees, and we're working out, we're working out more ways to better add value to work and stretch services as we speak every week. We work on things. Next week, next year, I think we'll be okay. We are filling in with contract services in some places, particularly internal service funds. We'll fill in with some contract work. We're looking at that for fleet. We're looking at that for buildings. Those lend themselves to contract work, buildings, janitorial repairs and things. We are filling in with part-time staff. We have part-time budget for. I think we'll be, we can't continue to decline staff. We can't continue to cut staff because there's a point where you just can't provide the services, and that is a, that is, that is, that is a relationship with, with population. In some places, it's services directly related to population, others, it's just related to geography, and we have to watch that carefully.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. And an additional follow-up, City Manager McDonald, would it be fair to regard the reduction in staff partly justified by the reduction in capital spending in that we have a very significant reduction in capital spending and some of the staff-supported capital spending projects?
Possibly one or two positions.
Not a, not a great deal.
Not a lot.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I think you already touched on this earlier, but this 37 percent figure. We had a large sum of money available to us that was unallocated through the one cent 14 process, and Mr. Rolland and others have pointed out that we have spent some of that money on projects such as the Hogadon Lodge and the Plaza, et cetera. This reduction, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this, this reduction that looks so large isn't, is, in many respects reflects the fact that we had this unallocated money that was subsequently allocated to projects, and we don't have that money anymore because the revenues have declined, and so it creates a, it reflects the boom and bust. Is that a fair statement?
Your Honor, Councilman Pell, it does. It was a lot of capital activity, and like I said, when you, when you get into capital activity, you almost double-count that in a budget, and it's just one of the dilemmas with, with multi-funds is you, so it's much larger. As a rule of thumb, you can about cut it in half for the real outflow, outflow. That has slowed down, and those projects have been caught up. There's, and there's also a lot of projects in the enterprise funds, bail fill, or land, bail fill projects. So those, those, those projects are wrapping up, and the projects mentioned earlier, Mike Cedar Pool, Hogadon, Firehouse, Fire Station Number Six, those projects were scheduled for years, encumbered, and then carried over, and those create some pretty hefty capital budgets, which won't be there shortly.
Okay, go ahead. One more follow-up, excuse me. And VH, could you talk a little bit about our reserves and how you would see them helping us through this process, because as many of us have come to the conclusion that we cannot assume that this downturn will be over anytime soon? How long can we last, given where we sit, and how worried are you that we'll run out of money and not be able to cover these deficits?
Your Honor, again, I'll focus on the general fund. The general fund has a reserve policy of approximately 50 percent of the fund's expenses. That's six months of operating with no revenue. In fiscal, in 16, the year of the downturn, we will spend about $4 million of those reserves. We actually started the year off with more reserves than had planned because 15 was still a good year, and even though we had budgeted to spend down reserves on one-time capital, we still had reserves come in because revenues exceeded expenses. So we started the year in 15 better than we planned, or in 16 better than we planned, and that gave us a little extra. So we'll spend down $4 million this year, we're budgeting to spend down $9 million. Certainly if the, certainly if the revenue changes a lot, that will change, and we've got to kick into another gear. That was the, that is the current policy for reserves. Part of this budget is proposing the policy for reserves change to a more traditional reserve level of two months, about 16 percent. Setting that as a baseline in our long-term fiscal plan, and if we continue to cut costs, and I don't know what form those costs will be in, right now, our fiscal year plan just addresses personnel because that's the, that's, that's the one that is the biggest cost driver, so it's based on that. If we do that, we can run 10 years before we flatten out and glide into that two, two month reserve level. And it's kind of self, I don't want to say self-fulfilling, but it's kind of self-regulating. If we, if we continue this decline, you can't go down much more, so you don't have a bust to anticipate. So two months, the traditional two months of governmental reserves was, is okay. So we do have that benchmark to measure against. I think we can go several years unless things accelerate, and then we have to, we have to accelerate our changes. I think we can go several years unless things accelerate, and then we have to, we have to accelerate our changes.
Councilman Hopkins?
On the other hand, I reserve the right to ask to put more money away if things get better.
Right.
Not necessarily in that account.
So in layman's terms, we're not putting money into the reserves while we're spending down the reserves?
No.
Got it. Sheesh.
Councilman Chekov? So V H, so it's fair to say that we, we, the city seventeen years ago prepared for this exact scenario? And that we are more, we are probably better prepared than any municipality in the state? Would that be a fair statement?
I think we're well-prepared for it. There are municipalities in the state that, Your Honor, carry pretty good reserve numbers in the thirty to forty percent range that don't have the energy fluctuations that Casper has. And they could have other events happen in their local economy that will cause this, but we're, we're pretty well-prepared. We looked at it seventeen years ago, recommended the fifty percent policy. Council has funded it. We've relied on it a couple of times since then, in the nineties and in the late two thousands with the real estate bubble that came along that kind of affected Casper in a weird way. It was, it was short-term, and then it bounced back. So we have relied on that a couple of times to not have to kick in a lot of cuts and, and adjust services. This is just another, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty much the walk the walk. If you're going to have reserves, you use them when things are down. Otherwise, why, why, why carry on?
Thanks, V H.
Okay, are we ready to open this up to the public? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the adoption of the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, please approach the lectern. Speaking in favor of the 2016-2017, Keith in favor. Kidding. Welcome.
Keith's good enough to moderate. Three, three South of Tonnee, eight years on the city council, two years as a citizen. And I just want to say that I am in favor of the budget, so I thought it was a valid question. My first comment has to do with the process by which we got to this point. And I was on the council for eight years, so I assume that the process was the same. And the process is the staff spends months and weeks putting together the numbers. The council spends two or three work sessions in the conference room, listening to the staff present their numbers. The public can come and listen to the presentation, but not comment because it's a work session. So I'm probably the first person to comment on the budget, which I wanted to add to my accolades. So listening to all of you work your magic isn't quite the same as being able to participate, even though it's thrilling at most times. So the staff presents the budget, you list to them. I would venture to guess that the budget that you have before you tonight is probably ninety-nine percent similar to what the staff proposed. Because generally speaking, the staff is the one who knows the ins and outs. And the council asks their questions of interest, but the general goes along with what the staff says. And then the council votes on it, we reach to this point, and now we have a chance to comment. Unless we've studied extensively the budget document, we really don't have much in the way of detail. I have a few questions about some specific areas that I hope perhaps when I'm done, I might make a little information on. It's difficult online to find, to pull out the different segments of the budget to see what was allocated last year versus this year. But I was interested in the help our fellow citizens programs, which would be the Children's Health, at the U C project, which is really an adjunct to the police department because they interview victims, child victims, and second-guys sold. The councils have a long-standing policy of helping the agency stay close because they are actually an adjunct to the law enforcement system. The county city health department, I was sitting in a conference room two years ago when they came and asked for consideration because they were cutting so close. And they provide a lot of services to homebound, very sick people. And they were asking for more money. They didn't get any more money. But I thought their presentation pointed out how vulnerable a lot of these people are. So I was interested in the way that the city was going to do, county makes a contribution, the city makes a contribution. And then the community action partnership, which is more or less a clearinghouse for social service agencies. And the county makes donation or allocation, the city makes an allocation. The county is cutting their budget substantially. Their contribution is divided between one cent general fund. The general fund is down ten percent, and the county one cent allocation is down thirty percent to the community action partnership. So those are fairly big numbers. And then they provide services to people who are on the edge, like childcare for homeless, try to provide help for mentally ill people, mentally ill. They fund money to the self-help center, and I'm not sure anymore what the full bridge is. So I would just like to know, and then the one other budget question I had that I hope I would get answered was recently, there was a comment in a story in the paper about five million for the convention project. And it was confusing where that came from because I believe it was today or yesterday, I think it was one cent one. And so I'd like to know exactly what the meaning is, and I don't know what. Some general budget comments that I think you've kind of fallen short through the year. The head quizz situation, by deciding to not accept bids from head quizz construction, at my last count, the, by awarding the bid to the second-place bidder instead of the first place bidder, it was eight hundred and eighty thousand bucks. I don't know if there's another one I missed, but somewhere close to a million dollars. And it cost the city an extra one million dollars to take the second place bidder because of the policy not to work contract formally with the council in head quizz. The twenty-four million in surplus excess one cent collections from the last cycle, last I knew, the city had spent, I think, about eight million dollars, over twenty-four million dollars. And I don't think there was really much discussion over the fact that the one cent allocations going forward are going to be short because the collections are short. And so the amounts that you all allocated to the list of projects are likely to be short because now we're not collecting as much money. And as in the last, the previous four-year cycle, money came in above what was anticipated. Now it's likely the money's going to come in below, so power, that will have to be made up in some way, or they'll have to cut that for the budget. I also think that there's been comments made about, well, we can't spend one cent money on operating budgets, which is not totally true because K D was spent, was funded in the past out of one cent money. But it's also true, a lot of sections of the city budget are a combination of one cent and general operating funds or enterprise funds. So if there's money going into water lines, there's one cent money going into water lines, there's other money going into water. So it seems to me it would be possible to put more one cent money into the water line projects, for example, the street projects, and then pull out a similar amount of the general fund money and use that general fund for things like the city-county health. So I think there's some significance there when you say that one cent money is not used for operations. The second sheet of ice, I think that was a mistake. I closed that. And I, the yearly deficit from the event center used to run about seven hundred and fifty thousand. I saw it in the information about the transfer to a private contractor. It's now up around a million. And I suspect that the increase in the deficit is partly due to having the second sheet of ice up there because the second sheet of ice never brought in the revenues suggested by our former city manager and actually increased the deficit because they took down the boards and the nets, whole deal for the ice because the minor league team from the ice arena plays up there frequently. But they change out the setup frequently, not just a couple of times a year. So that's a lot of cost when they do that. So I think that's actually a cost to us. In the legal fees situation, I think you've made some mistakes, the head quizz costs because of that, which I think, I was deposed in this lawsuit about two months ago. And you can tell what the different sides are advocating by the questions they ask. The head quizz team is saying that they can set up in a number of ways. And knowing our former city manager, I have no doubt that that's possible myself, personally. But I believe that city's share of the head quizz fees is above two hundred thousand by now. And perhaps it's still growing because we haven't even got to the trial yet. My sweet wife came in here and filed a complaint about the city manager's actions. You took it to a executive session to discuss the complaint and then refused to tell the public what you decided, which we believe that's required by state law. I think a recent ruling by the district court judge has confirmed that. So that's legal costs that you're putting on citizens, not mentioning your own legal costs. You have a temporary attorney that, or appealing attorney, Judy Stewart, that I think gives consistently bad advice. And you're paying her a lot per hour for bad advice, I think.
Two hundred and twenty bucks.
Could be had there. And then I think it's also true this last year that the electrical franchise fees in the city of Casper were increased in order to take the one cent money out of the funding stream for KDA and replace it with the franchise fee money from every taxpaying franchise fee person in the city of Casper. And so whoever accused of being a tax-senior, they'll know that's right. I guess that's about it. I just wanted to make one final comment that there, according to the board up there, there is no more Councilman Schlogger, as I heard mentioned earlier. So I just encourage you to keep up.
Ah, thanks. I didn't even notice. Sorry.
And that's just been my comment.
Okay. Questions or comments to address to Keith Citizen Good Enough? Thank you.
If at some point I could give you, or I could call tomorrow and get the answer.
Right.
The community action partnership, the city county health department, children's advisory board, for the five million for the convention center type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask individuals to speak in favor of the 2016-2017 budget, please approach the lectern. Speaking in favor. Okay, anyone to speak in opposition to the 2016-2017 budget, please approach the lectern. Welcome, R C.
Good evening. My name is R C Johnson. I reside at four fifty North Norfolk Street, Casper, Wyoming. I have some concerns about how things get presented to the general public. I understand how often the budget has been awarded, the distinguished budget presentation award. And I see that it is intended as an operations guide, a financial plan, and as a communication device. I would like to speak briefly to the communications device aspect of it because when I downloaded information about the budget, and I saw that in 2013, there was a list of seven goals that were identified. When in this particular budget, you reduced it down to three. So the question is, what happens to the other goals? How do those get addressed? Moreover, when you go from one year to another, the only consistent numbering of goals is for the downtown goal. The other goals seem to jump around in terms of numbers. So as an everyday, ordinary citizen, if I'm trying to follow what is happening with the budget, looking, for example, the council goals that were distributed this time around. Okay, the downtown is still at number one. The infrastructure is number two, which has a number five. The recreation goal is number three, which has a number six or seven, depending on which year you look at the budget. So for the average citizen to follow what is going on, it's kind of difficult if it doesn't have parallels from one year to the other. So it's easy to follow and know where the funds are going and how they're being allocated and used. So it's just a readability type of thing, understanding that I'm just a representative of an average citizen, and I'm just trying to follow to see what's going on and how those funds get allotted. The one thing that really concerned me about this budget is the item on page three seventy-six. I am looking at the program slash budget, city funds allocated, county funds allocated. And I'm looking at the line called family planning. The city is certainly doing its job with its allocation of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. I don't understand where the allocation from the county can go to zero. Family planning, I, I don't know if it's because of politics about family planning and why it's not there. Many people think that family planning is all about abortion, which it is not. But it is a vital aspect for women's healthcare. By definition, it is designed to allow individuals and helpers to anticipate and attain their desired number of children, the spacing and the timing of their births. It can use contraception, but it also helps persons who are sterile, who are not able to produce. And so when you're talking about family planning, you can very well be talking about surrogate care, uh, health. There are all kinds of things that can be happening. The health of persons, if they decide that they want to use a method, that still is a healthcare concern, and it needs to be addressed. So I'm really concerned that the city of Casper is going to carry the burden of the healthcare for an agency called Casper, Metro County. I, I don't see the Metro County part coming into play. I also just wanted to make an observation. These were my prepared days. But as I listened to what was going on, I noted that seventeen years ago, in the intimate wisdom of our city leaders, they decided to have a reserve fund. And seventeen years ago, we were going through the boom bust. I've lived in this city long enough, and my family has been here since nineteen eleven. So we've seen a lot of boom busts going on. What I don't understand is when we ever get to, you know, diversify our economy. Every single time we go through this, and I listen to you agonize trying to cut on this, but I don't see in the plan the development of a diverse economy. Other cities are able to survive because they aren't relying on a single extraction industry. I also wonder whether or not the term, the, the revenue from the extraction industry is correctly identified and whether it really is just another form of sales tax. Because when it comes right down to it, it's what the extraction industry is able to sell more than anything. And it has, it is a form of sales tax. And it has, it is a form of sales tax. But we get to the point that we pay homage and we genuflect at the altar of the mineral industry as if we can't do something else, as if we can't look someplace else. Certainly, there are other cities in the United States that have a more stable economy. And it seems to me that somewhere in our budget, we should be anticipating this boom bust and establishing a diversity economy that allows us to be stable. So those are my comments, and I thank you very much for listening.
Questions or comments for R.C. Johnson?
Your Honor.
Yeah.
I think just to clarify the council goals thing, we, I don't think we decided to put them in any particular order, that's just how they're listed, correct? It's not in order of importance, it just have, these are our three goals. And in 2014, we got together and took those seven or eight goals it was, I think, and then we just condensed them into three to make it a little easier, I guess. But it was never, you know, downtown's our number one goal, it's just how it, it was, it's just how it fell on the paper. It's not in order of importance or anything. So I understand that was confusing because we went from seven or eight goals to three, and they switch orders.
Well, actually, in your request for proposal on a comprehensive plan, it goes to twelve.
Mm-hmm.
It's quite a big, you know, just help us understand when you do decide to consolidate, what has gone in. Do some crosswalks, do the kinds of things that happen in other industries so that the citizen understands the communication of the budget document. Thank you.
This time, I would invite, yeah, go ahead.
Point of work, Mr. Green. From what I received, the text, the mic is not functioning for the citizens commenting.
Okay, um, can...
Technical problem, obviously is.
Can we just turn on that extra mic right there and call it good, or?
Is that on?
Yeah.
Not working?
I hear it.
About now? Nope?
I can hear it.
Yeah, it is. All right. Citizen Goodenough? Okay. Anyone else to speak in opposition of the 2016-2017 budget? Anyone else to speak in opposition of the 2016-2017 budget, please approach the lectern? I'm going to close the public hearing if nobody else starts forward. Okay. There being no others to speak for or against the adoption of the fiscal year budget 2016-2017, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize the adoption of the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget.
Some of...
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Discussion?
You know, I'll take a stab at a couple of council, or former councilmen Goodenough's I don't have this document committed to memory, but we are allocating money to the Children's Advocacy Project, the Community Action Partnership, and the Health Department, I believe. We asked all of those agencies to accept a 10% cut, if I remember correctly. So they all are in the budget that are somewhat reduced, but I believe each was contacted and was okay with that reduction, or at least understood the need for it. Is that a fair statement, Mr. McDonald?
Your Honor, we sent, we sent a letter out to all the agencies we traditionally funded and explained the revenue situation for them. We did not ask for a cut, however, some of them came forward with a 10% cut. And so we thought out of fairness, we applied that to everyone, but we invited them to come back into council if they needed to have that funding restored or actually increased. And I don't believe anyone responded to do that.
And I won't be able to cover all of these, I'm sure some of the other council members can address some of these matters. Don't, don't, I guess with respect to the second sheet of ice, you're absolutely correct that the revenues that we were hoping would come from that have not yet materialized. And so, and I'm sure that did have some role to play in that deficit increasing at the event center. Real problem at the event center is we're just having problems booking because we are trying to do it independently, and hopefully that will change with the outsourcing. With respect to the conference center, we, that money, as I understand it, was held aside after it was originally allocated for the civic auditorium many years ago. And when that project did not materialize, a portion of that money was kept in reserve, essentially, to work on a conference center, which at one point, the city was looking at much larger investment in a conference center. And what seems to be lost in this discussion is that with an agreement in place to assist with some of these infrastructure improvements, we are holding a private developer accountable to spending four or five times the amount that the city, at least the city, would invest, and that that conference center may not materialize without those infrastructure improvements, and that that will have a very significant and long-term positive benefit to the community. With, since you brought up the head quist bids again, we've discussed this ad nauseam, really, but I think what's lost in those discussions is that we had good reason to take the second bidder based on performance difficulties. And the cheapest option isn't always the best option if projects don't get completed and significant amounts of staff time are required and legal fees paid in order to get projects done that should be, should have, should have been done on time. And with respect to the other legal fees involving the head quist matter, I guess I would just like to point out that anyone can sue anyone else at any time for any reason. And that's how our system works. And that's all I'll say about that. So, and in respect, in response to R.C. Johnson's concerns, I guess I would also like to point out that we have elections. And when those elections take place, new people sit up here, and they may have a different view of the city's priorities and the city's needs than the previous council. And so it's quite understandable that a new group of people would come together and say, you know what, that was a good set of goals for that group of people, but I see it a little differently, and we're going to rewrite that. And we've seen that happen, and that's a healthy process, that's why we have elections, is so that new people can come in and have influence over the course and direction of council. And your question about the diversification, I haven't, I haven't been here since, well, 1911, but I've only lived here for close to 30 years. That entire 30 years, people have been talking about the need to diversify our economy. And I think some of the actions that we have engaged in have been taken on with that very thing in mind. And my belief is, and I don't know how many people in the room share this, but I believe that the key to diversification is to make this community a very attractive place for people to live, with many opportunities for, with recreational opportunities, entertainment opportunities, with a street system and a water system that works, where we have a reputation that if you come to Casper, you know, you've made a good choice. And so some of the things that we've been criticized for, you know, the plaza, of course, being the most prominent example, have that intent of trying to make this a more attractive community so that, because if businesses can't get employees to come here, they're not going to want to locate here. And so to me, it's all part of the same problem, but we're not going to diversify our economy by criticizing the energy industry, and we're not going to diversify our economy by huge subsidies to businesses to coming in. We can't afford to do that. So I think what we have to do is concentrate on promoting our community and helping other people see what a wonderful place it is to live, and that the diversification will take care of itself to the extent that we do that. So that's my long speech.
I'm going to just pop something in here. Referring to R.C. Johnson's concern about diversifying the economy, over there are two representatives from CADA, and that's their job. And Keith Goodenough criticizes the money we give to CADA from franchise fees, tax and spend, I believe was your characterization. But the role of CADA is to bring in businesses, and I think that that money spent, it falls whether or not you're an optimist or a pessimist, you know? Do we do nothing? Do we not advertise the amenities and try to bring business in? I don't know. I think that that hunkered-down mentality in a downturn is as corrosive as the conditions themselves. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Go ahead.
One thing I did want to clarify a little bit, and Councilman Powell alluded to it, is that basically, the money that it would be spent, as Citizen Goodenough alluded to for the convention center, is basically, that is public money on public streets, and that's for the improvements to D and E streets, and none of it is going on to private property or for private gain, so to speak. So that is public money to improve, basically, streets that need to be improved. And to make that ease through, and the congestion at Starbucks and some of the other places in that I-25 Center Street area, a less congested, better area to get through. And all of those things are things that need to be done just to maintain the city. So I wanted to pass that on as well.
Right. And for clarity, it was 5.5 to the civic auditorium folks, then that got moved to the AMICO possibility, and now it's been brought back, and we're still talking about a fund of 5.1, and we haven't spent any of that yet. And the improvements that we're entertaining discussion of, to purify the outside of private business, building a convention center, isn't going to be $5 million. It's going to be less. So that's, those are important points of clarity. While I'm clarifying, Citizen Goodenough did misspeak in the fact that he said Councilman Headquist. At no time was Councilman Headquist... Well, the minute Councilman Headquist was no longer Councilman Headquist, we immediately started approving contracts from Headquist Construction. Now, I know that, you know, that's a bone of contention, but he wasn't Councilman Headquist when we started approving his construction. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just going back to the comments about diversification, strangely enough, I think it goes back to probably when Ms. Johnson's family was first in Casper, Wyoming. That was probably the first time that oil was discovered north of here in Midwest, and it got refined here in Casper. And the truth is, I think, ever since that time, we've been looking for another golden bullet, or silver bullet, if you will, to diversify Casper's economy. We keep trying. We've got the Natrona County International Airport, which is an excellent asset. We're actually trying to, always trying to get businesses out there. We have got businesses out there. We have the largest airport in the state of Wyoming, happens to be central to the state. We've also got, what's it called, the zone?
International Trade Zone. Yeah, International Trade Zone.
Yeah, the International Trade Zone. And I think we're working on that through CADA and the county to try and get that to cover the entire county. So that's just another feather in the cap of trying to diversify Casper's economy. We have seen Casper's economy diversify a little bit when it comes to tourism. We've got the Whitewater Park that brings a few people in. We've got Things on the Mountain that bring a few people in. And I think the, well, the ski center up there will be doing more of that. So we're trying, but if anybody knows of anybody that wants to build a business in Casper, send them our way or send them the bill.
Your Honor.
Councilman Humphrey.
That doesn't matter. I just want to dovetail into what you were saying about our formal Councilman Headquist, because I think really it's about being a responsible bidder and completing contracts. And when that doesn't occur, somebody is deemed an irresponsible bidder, regardless of whether they're not on council or not. And frankly, our council gave a second shot, and I hope that it's going very well. But it truly is about whether or not you complete your contracts and you're a responsible bidder, and I think that was one of our biggest issues.
Duly noted. Anyone else? Well, are we ready to move on to the question of amendments?
Need a motion to adopt.
Okay. Chair would entertain a mo, oh, we already have it, Johnson and Hopkins. Okay, amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Consideration of this next item will be by resolution. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny a conditional use permit for an accessory building, being a garage with 19-foot-high walls in excess of the 12-foot maximum wall height permitted in an R2, one-unit residential zoning district on Lot 8, Block 7, Pineview Meadows Edition Number 2, Subdivision 1, located at 2850 East 5th Street. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have six main exhibits, exhibit number five of which consists of five sub-exhibits. All of these exhibits are as follows. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald dated June 13, 2016. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication, as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated June 8, 2016. Exhibit number three, that document being a staff report from city staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which was dated May 13, 2016, pardon me. Exhibit number four, findings of fact and conclusions of law for case number PLN 016-024-C, that document dated May 19, 2016. Exhibit number five, again, consists of five separate exhibits that were introduced at the May 19, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and consists of exhibits lettered A through E. Exhibit A, conditional use permit application by the applicant. Exhibit B, being the map of the 300-foot notification zone as required by ordinance. Exhibit C, the legal notice which was sent to the Casper Star Tribune advertising the date of the public hearing in this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exhibit D, being the notice of public hearing sent to the property owners within the 300-foot radius of the subject property. And Exhibit E, being a memo to the chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission itself. And the final exhibit being Exhibit Number Six, and that document being the appeal request from John Cardenas to Craig Collins of the Casper City Planner for this appeal dated May 23, 2016. May 23, 2016.
City Manager reports.
Your Honor, council is considering tonight a appeal from Mr. John Cardenas for a conditional use permit that was applied for to be issued at the address 2850 East 5th Street. And that was a permit that would authorize higher than, walls higher than the local, than the zoning for that area allow. Planning and Zoning Commission considered that, did not find the requirements to allow that, and denied it. Mr. Cardenas filed it within the appropriate number of days for council, and it is before you tonight to consider.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of issuing a conditional use permit, to please approach the lectern. You may present any information, including information presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, if you want to speak in favor of the conditional use permit, which is going against the ruling of the Planning and Zoning Board, please approach the lectern.
Hello? I'm John Cardenas, I live at 2850 East 5th Street. First go around, there was five city council members. I won't give the votes, lost two. Some of their concerns were rather the structure would be strong enough to hold up a second level. So, I got a paper here where I hired a destruction engineer, came to look at it, everything checked out good on that. Another, one of their concerns were windows on the west side of the garage. So, we decided to do no windows on the west side of the garage. They had, also had concerns on the siding I was getting used, so I decided to open the siding that I've actually on my house, which is steel siding, nice. Been in my house for 17 years, and I put, I put an addition on nine years ago, and spent about $8,000 doing that. I think I've made everybody's house value go up in the neighborhood, and so I'll see how that could be a concern of making the value go down. There's two other garages, three blocks away, between 8 and 10th Street, that are upper-level garages, almost right in my neighborhood. Another thing is, there was one neighbor who had concerns about the guiltiness. This neighbor, he is not even from Wyoming, he's from Oregon, he's only been in Wyoming for six or seven months. And his concerns were that I would bring the value down in the neighborhood, and that it would look funny. And in my eyes, I found it annoying in my neighborhood to make the value go up, I just can't understand how this would make the value go down. You guys need this?
Could you pass it around, or?
Yep. Brandon Baller.
Your Honor, I'd request that we mark this as Exhibit Number Seven. And I will write on here Exhibit Number Seven for identification.
Request granted.
And I will pass it through council.
Thank you.
And I'd also ask this be included as part of the record.
Krista, did you get that? Thank you. Okay. Questions or comments to address to John Cardenas? Sure.
Just so we're clear, from the text, I understand that you have agreed with the condition that the entire structure will be cited, including the old concrete block building. Okay. And that will match the house? Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions, Vice Mayor?
If I recall correctly, too, the things that you just mentioned, the elimination of the window, the structural investigation, and the siding, were all amendments that were made to the original planning and zoning motion prior to their vote. Is that correct as well? Basically, when Planning and Zoning took their vote to either approve or deny, they had already made amendments to the conditions of approval, that if they would have approved it, you would have had to have done the things you just mentioned.
Okay, let me take a whack at it. This conditional use permit that you're asking for would include or not include the siding and the no windows and all of that? Craig, help me? Thank you.
Your Honor, I don't have a copy of the resolution from me. The condition should be in the resolution for approval. I believe the window did not gain the number of votes necessary to make that amendment, which is correct, I mentioned you have on the floor.
Okay.
The siding was a condition that was recommended by staff that's actually from the code, so that's a code requirement.
Okay.
Was the structural?
The structural. The, that was a strong suggestion by an architect that was on our planning commission. He was concerned with the structural, but it was not a condition as far as direction.
Okay.
So, the window was brought up, but it was defeated as an amendment?
That's how I remember it.
All right, that's why I was asking.
All right. Anyone else to speak in favor of issuing a conditional use permit? Please approach the lectern. You two may present any information.
My name's Nicole Briggs, and I've been in real estate for a while here, and I just would like to know that if you've not depreciated the values, then they bring values up.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Nicole Briggs?
And her address for the record, Your Honor?
Oh, address for the record?
I live at 34 Lila.
Okay, thank you.
I own a home at 2850 East 11, just six blocks away.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the conditional use permit? Please approach the lectern. Anyone else speak in favor? Speaking in favor, go on once. Speaking in favor? Okay. Anyone wishes to speak in opposition of issuing a conditional use permit? Please approach the lectern to speak in opposition. Welcome, sir. Name and address.
Ted Sellers at 2819 East 5th Street, Casper, Wyoming.
Okay.
But, 40 years living in Casper prior to moving to Oregon, so I don't know why that would be an issue. Nonetheless, yeah, I have concerns about what it's gonna look like in the neighborhood. And the other thing that I have real concerns about is, is this going to be something that's going to be used as an apartment for somebody? Is there gonna be hot and cold, like waters are gonna be plumbing in there? Just what does this going to be like? So, yeah, I mean, what's the main purpose of it? It seems like that his earlier statement was that he wanted a man cave. I think that's a little extreme just for a man cave, but that's not my, that's not my call. My call is that, yes, I am concerned about the appearance in the neighborhood.
Okay. Questions or comments for Ted Sellers? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition of issuing a conditional use permit? Welcome, Mr. Steensland.
Yeah, Steensland, 533 South of Washington, Casper, Wyoming. I could be listed as opposition per se, because I don't know where this guy lives or anything about it, but that's a residential, single-unit residential. That's what I watch in my neighborhood. And I guess the rules were made to limit certain things that wouldn't be desirable for a residential neighborhood. Two-story, I guess my question would be, why do you need the second story? If it were in my neighborhood, I would rather go by the old rules that were there. We've got, I've got the same situation in my neighborhood. I talked to Craig about a gentleman building a new house a block away from me. I think the rules were made for a reason, and I guess they were good reasons then, and I think they're good reasons now. Personally, I would want a two-story right next door to me. However, a block away from me, a neighbor put in a two-story out of scrap lumber, and I don't believe anybody can address that at all as a city. So, it's still there, it's still standing. Thank you.
Questions or comments for Dennis Steensland? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition of the conditional use permit? Anyone else to speak in opposition? There being no more individuals to speak in opposition or in upholding the conditional use permit, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution upholding the decision of the Casper, Wyoming Planning and Zoning Commission denying a conditional use permit for an accessory building, garage with 19-foot-high walls in excess of the 12-foot maximum wall height permitted on Lot 8, Block 7, Pineview Meadows Edition Number 2, Subdivision Number 1, located at 2850 East 5th Street.
I just want to clarify, and this is for you, City Attorney Lubin. So, a no vote opens the way for the conditional use permit? Or a no vote upholds the planning and zoning?
Your first statement is correct. If council, let me restate that if I may.
Okay.
If council votes down this resolution, that would open the door for council to consider the substitute resolution to approve the conditional use permit. In other words, if you vote in favor of the resolution that's before you now, you will uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny the conditional use permit. If council's desire through a majority is to allow the conditional use permit, then council needs to vote this resolution down.
So, a yes is to uphold the planning and zoning decision? Got that?
That is correct for this resolution that's before council.
Okay. So, we've already got our first and second, right?
We haven't made a motion yet.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission in denying the conditional use permit. So, move. Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Did we get it all done? Go ahead.
A couple of comments. One, I noticed in his petition, he had indicated one of the structures within the three-block area was at 921 Darrington. And obviously, I didn't go take a tape measure to it, but if you look at the door size compared with where the eve height is, and that's what we're really talking about, is the eve height, and not necessarily the gabled end of a building. But if you look at that, they were very unique in their design, that it would appear that their wall height is not over the 12 feet because of the way they've got the barn roof on there. So that it looks like they have tried to comply with that. The other one, the 911 Darrington, I wasn't able to get by that one, and I don't know exactly what it all looks like. However, again, on the side that has the two dormers, that again appears to be not over the 12-foot height. The back wall, I can't really tell where the gable falls on that one. So, you know, it looks like potentially those two structures have actually met the current code. And when I drove past the gentleman's house and really looked at the area, there are, outside of, there was a two-story house on the next corner over, I believe that's Fifth and Payne, but that's actually a house, not a detached structure. But otherwise, that was the only thing I noticed until you get several blocks away that was over a single story. So, this is, in my opinion, starts to become a fairly significant change to the neighborhood.
Okay. Councilman Hopkins?
Well, I would just note that I think in P and Z rules, R2 does not limit you to one story. So, anybody in that neighborhood could build a second story on if they chose to. I, too, drove around there, and there are several, several-story structures in the area. So, it's, you know, it does meet the setbacks that were in place at that time, and he's gonna make it look similar to his house. And in my neighborhood, a little ways away from there, I guess, we have, within a block, we have several structures like this in our block, plus several apartment complexes for that matter. But it really doesn't change the outlook of the neighborhood. It's part, parcel of it. And as a matter of fact, we have gone away from, at one point, we said, if you ever had a mother-in-law apartment in your backyard, and this is not a mother-in-law apartment, if it was not gonna be rented, I think, for six months, it could never be rented again. We don't do that anymore, because it makes sense to have people rent those apartments. So, and again, this is not an apartment, it's a garage addition, is what it boils down to. But there's no, just because several houses aren't two-story, R2 does not say it has to be one-story.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Well, as the clarification, it's actually only applies to detached structures.
Right, right.
And that's where that's coming in, is a detached structure. If it were all part of the single building and dwelling, then, yeah, it could be 25 feet tall, i.e. a two-story. And that's what I was referring to, is the one a block away is a two-story, all one unit, not a detached.
Councilman Humphrey.
I guess I just have a general question to help me understand the history behind why 12 feet, and what's our concern with 19 feet from a historical perspective? Does that make sense? Why not 19 feet? And I hope that's not a dumb question, I'm sorry.
Your Honor, it's not a dumb question. I'm not sure I have an answer before I actually start my funerals. My understanding is, in Wolf Creek, there was a very large building built, and the accessory building, size limitations came as a result of a neighbor outcrying, but that very large building was up close in the neighborhood. So, I'm not sure why 12 feet. By assumption, with the size of the rock floors or something, maybe the detached structure needs to be under a certain size. Talking about detached versus attached, if it were attached to the house, there is no such condition. So, I'm not sure if that makes sense, but I don't know if that happened to a lot of times.
Go ahead.
As long as you're at the podium, Greg. Can you help us understand the conversation within the Planning and Zoning Commission? Were there objections about the windows and the siding, or were they pretty much focused on the height? Or was it just a matter of saying, why have rules if you're not gonna follow them?
Your Honor, this rule wasn't very contentious. One of the things that turned on my soapbox this week, so all of the others just formed, we had five, I think, commissioners there of all seven. It may have changed the outcome, there was three, four, two against, it may have changed the outcome, and they got the floor necessary for approvals. Everyone knew that, so it was definitely fine. It was not very contentious. One of the planning commissioners is actually here tonight, I appreciate it. Commissioner Frank Lee here, and she can glory and speak about her thoughts on it if she'd like, but she's the one that proposed that the windows appeared in the neighbor's yard mainly for treason. So, there was a little bit of discussion on that. And generally, I think it was a compatibility with the neighborhood and the scale of the structure was a concern, so I'm sure that people are, will be.
While you're there, for all the libertarians saying, it's my property, leave me alone, let me do what I want, I'm investing in my property, why is that a bad thing? Explain to us why we should follow these rules and pay attention to zoning and codes.
Um, well, your honor, I-
I know, that was overly broad.
...I want to enforce or not, that's not the plan here of the city council.
Right.
To enact those laws and enforcing them. This is basically about the neighborhood compatibility issue, to be a good first, trying to do something that doesn't impact your neighbors negatively. It's a, it's a balancing act between pocket rents and impacting your neighbors negatively. So where you draw that line is kind of an individual preference.
Okay. Thanks. Although, I got to tell you, you were outdone in that argument at a leadership meeting when Councilman Powell said, a zone is a promise to your neighbors.
It's a, it's a set of guidelines, it's a, it's a promise, and people like to know the expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I also toured the subject property or, from the street and from the alley, and want to compliment the owner for keeping a well-maintained property. I think, I think you exemplify a responsible homeowner. In the deliberations of this, I want council to also acknowledge that not only is this a zone with zone requirements, but that the conditional, the conditional use application is a process that is available for each citizen. For each citizen to be able to come up and say, I would like a conditional use, I would like an exemption from the zone. And here again, the, the resident, the subject process has, has utilized legal avenues in, in requesting his variance from the zone requirements. I think those are important because people get frustrated when you say there's an avenue for approval, and, and then you don't get that approval. That said, we entrust the Planning and Zoning Committee to uniformly implement the rules, regulations, and processes, and that too needs to be considered in tonight's vote.
Very good. Councilman Powell.
Your Honor, you did accurately quote me. I, I, we all struggle with these matters, and I have not been to the property, but I certainly accept what council, other, other council members report, that this is a well-maintained property and that this request is made with the best of intentions. For myself, though, I, I essentially agree with Mr. Steensland, that if, if we're going to have a, a code, we should be following the code. And I think when people purchase a property, the code's in place, and we should all live within those guidelines. I, I, it, it, it's even more troublesome that it's really not a line-of-sight issue because there are second-story dwellings in the area. But I, I think if you allow exceptions in, in this manner, and we have struggled with this in the past, in essence, you water down the whole business of having a code that people can rely upon when they make their purchase decisions. And, and so I think, so I, I, I think I'm coming down on denying the conditional use and supporting what the Planning and Zoning Commission said. I too am frustrated at times when we, you know, don't have a full body there reviewing these matters. But I, I think whether, whether the code is a sensible code in this case or not, it is the code, and so I believe we should follow it.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilman Johnson.
I understand the need for codes and, and, and that kind of a thing, but I think they're more there to protect the, the neighborhood from people building just something completely outrageous. I think he's making this look like his house. The only problem is the walls are too high, from what I see, and I really just don't see that as that big of an issue that we should deny this permit, so I'm going to be voting how we're supposed to.
Not?
Not uphold Planning and Zoning Commission in this instance, and sided with the homeowner.
Councilman Pacheco.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm going to agree with Councilman Johnson on a couple fronts here. There's a reason we have this appeal process that comes, and we can take each one by case-by-case scenario, and that doesn't mean we just throw every zoning law out the window for whatever it may be, and it doesn't, I don't feel it waters down the law. What I do think it does is it does uphold private property rights as well, and there is a fine line for us to, to balance that. With that being said, though, it's important for a homeowner to say, look, this is what I'm trying to do, and, and Councilman Johnson said, if it's not outrageous, if it's not without this, this whole idea that there's going to be a, a, you know, a disco up top, yes, whatever it may be, I tend to side with, with that. And that may cause hotber, heartburn with P and Z in that sense, but there's a reason we have this, this process, and it's there to represent, and also to represent the citizens, the pay taxes. And so, not to say that we would vote every single time on changing that and, and this process, but for me, if it's in with, in a very reasonable approach, then I would be willing to side with the private property owner. There's a level of where we have so many laws and regulations that we can sometimes have too much overreach, so that's, that's where I stand.
Vice Mayor.
Now that you heard my one side of the argument, I will throw out the other side of the argument, because actually, P and Z voted three to two to approve it. Unfortunately, it requires a vote of four, and there were two absent. So in reality, P and Z of the members there did approve the conditional use permit. So there's another aspect to be thinking about. So I thought I would throw that out there. So, welcome to our dilemma up here, folks.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, your honor, and I'm just kind of looking at this. Number one, I, I, I believe the P and Z probably would have passed this, and then, you know, I, right before I came here, I actually took a quick cruise throughout the neighborhood and tried to envision the structure as it's going in there, and the basis of my decision is it's not really going to change the neighborhood. You know, I think when this gets to our table, you want to avoid the things that we were talking about with our zoning codes, when you're driving through a neighborhood and you say, hey, what is that? You know, I don't think we have that here. We've got other structures of a similar size, it's not going to affect the integrity of the neighborhood, you know. That, I'm, I'm just saying, I think we need to be cautious of that, of that as well.
Okay, I would like a point of clarity, and this is for you, Mr. Cardenas. Are you not going to build that window? That, that overlooks and possibly intrudes in the-
No windows on the west side pertaining to the neighborhood.
Okay.
And also, it's going to be, is a trophy, like the hounds, I need places to put mounts, and I want to move.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Are, are we ready to vote now? Um.
Lost our machine.
Do we have? Do we have any amendments to this? No? All right. Please cast your vote.
And you want to refresh our memory?
Right. A, a yes vote upholds planning and zoning's denial. A no vote overturns it and starts us down the path of a conditional use permit. Oh.
Oh, I got to vote it.
With Councilman Powell voting aye, all others voting nay, motion fails.
Okay. In light of the fact that the council has not upheld the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision in this matter, and having considered relevant factors required by municipal code section seventeen, twelve, two, four, zero, H, the chair would entertain a motion to overturn the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and grant the conditional use permit as applied to find that one. Conditional use permit is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent, Title seventeen of the Casper Municipal Code, and will not substantially impair appropriate use of neighborhood property and will serve the public need, convenience, and welfare, and two, that the conditional use is designed to be compatible with adjacent land uses in the area of its locations. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution reversing the decision of the Casper, Wyoming Planning and Zoning Commission in denying a conditional use permit for an accessory building garage with a nineteen high, with nineteen-foot-high walls in excess of the twelve-foot-high maximum wall height permitted on lot eight, block seven, Pine View Meadows Edition Number Two, Subdivision Number One, located at twenty-eight-fifty East Fifth Street.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Discussion? Amendments?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
A question was raised earlier, I believe, by Councilman Kathy, as to whether or not there was anything in the resolution regarding the windows.
Right.
If I could make a statement, the particular resolution as currently drafted states, per section seventeen, twelve, one-twenty-one F, subsection F, subsection six, for the Casper Municipal Code, the accessory, accessory building, once completed, shall be similar in exterior design with compatible exterior residential materials and roof pitch to the principal residential building and surrounding neighborhood residential structures. In addition, vertical medical, vertical metal siding is expressly prohibited. However, there is no statement about the windows on the west side. If council desires to add that to this resolution, I would suggest an appropriate amendment be made.
But he's on board with the steel siding and compliant all except for the window?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out to council, if a question existed about the windows, it is not in the current resolution to grant the conditional use permit.
So should we amend it to mention the windows?
That is a question for you as your board.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I would like to propose an amendment, and actually, it will be two things in one amendment. One of them would be to eliminate the west-side window, and secondly, would be to use the horizontal siding as is on his main residence. Because I think he mentioned he was going to go ahead and use the same steel siding, only his residence has horizontal, which looks like lap siding, as opposed to the vertical.
Okay. Do we need to?
I'll second that.
Okay, do we need to first vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
With the second.
Okay, I have an amendment to, please rephrase. To go with, with vertical siding?
Vertical steel siding and the elimination of the west window.
Got it. Okay.
Excuse me, I believe he has horizontal siding?
Horizontal siding.
Horizontal.
What did I say? Did I say?
What did you say, vertical?
It's supposed to be horizontal.
Okay.
I believe the status of the motion is to clarify the resolution to provide that the, if the conditional use permit is granted, that it would be built with horizontal siding, compatible with the siding on the residential structure, with the elimination of any windows on the west side of the structure as built.
Okay. And so, that's the motion. It's, it was moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Hopkins, so we're voting on that motion to include horizontal siding and the em, the elimination of the west window, windows. Got it? So we're voting on that right now. This is the amendment. So please cast your vote on that.
With Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Pow, Powell abstaining, all others voting aye, motion passes.
Okay. So now we need to go back to the original?
Your Honor, yes, now you will be voting on the motion, on the motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Which was moved by Johnson, seconded by Hopkins, and now all we need to do is cast our vote on the conditional use permit.
Discussion.
Oh, do we need to discuss that? Do we need more discussion? Yeah.
Yes, and, and I would, if, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pose a question to the city attorney. If this, if this action is, is denied, and we do not grant the conditional use permit, does the applicant have an opportunity, a fair opportunity, to return to Planning and Zoning Committee and, and get the full opinion of the full Planning and Zoning Committee in the future with perhaps an amended application similar to what we're discussing in this last amendment, et cetera?
I, I would, your honor, I would submit that the decision by the city council on this conditional use application is final, and he could not resubmit an identical application to Planning and Zoning, but he could submit an application if it was materially different.
So for his appeal, we're the appeal board, and this is it?
Decision is final, on the application as it now stands.
Got it. And a follow-up? A follow-up? First follow-up from highly.
Thank you. City Attorney Lubin, could you describe for me what you would consider to be a materially different application?
Uh, probably one that would bring the building within the height requirement, as an example, with, or changes in the building somehow that would vary it from what the council, the Planning and Zoning Commission had before it. I'm not sure what those changes would be, whether it be extending the sidewalls or doing something different in that respect, but as a practical matter, the application, if he, he would not be able to bring the same application that he's brought upon appeal to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Councilman Hopkins.
If I might, a couple of things.
I don't know what he might propose for a, a different change, but it could be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's unlikely that it would be approved, at least with the three that were, the vote that was there.
Understood.
The applicant did have the opportunity to postpone that, that particular hearing until more Planning and Zoning Commissioners were present. My understanding is he opted not to do that. He took the risk then of the board that was there at that time, but there has to be finality to the proceedings.
Okay.
Well, a couple of things. If you wanted to change it, what you, what you could do is attach it to your house.
Right.
The breezeway. That's one way you could do it, but the other thing, he's got to start completely over, put in a new application fee. So he's got to start over, wait another month or two, so, for that reason, I mean, there's ways around it, and, but right now, I'm not sure it gains us anything to go there.
Right. Okay. Are we ready to vote on granting a conditional use permit? Are we ready? Okay, please cast your vote.
Councilman Powell voting nay, all others voting aye, motion passes.
And, your honor, we will bring forward a new resolution for your approval reflecting the amendment as approved tonight.
Thank you. And we'll just vote on that pro forma in a next regular meeting?
No, it'll be brought to you just for your signature because council has passed the amendment.
Okay.
Form that's in your packet does not include that amendment.
Right.
So we need to modify it to reflect the amendment, so that the conditional use permit restrictions are, are clear in the document.
So I need to read that before I sign it? Is that what you're saying?
Probably should.
Thank you. Okay. Do we need a break? Shall we press on? All right. I now declare the public hearing open for consideration of the transfer of ownership and location of retail liquor license number fifteen. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, your honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one corresponds from Tracy L. Belser to V.H. McDonald, dated June tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Exhibit number two, excuse me, that being the affidavit of publication, as published in the Casper Star Tribune, dated June third, two thousand and sixteen. Exhibit number three, the affidavit of website publication as published on the Casper City website, dated May thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And exhibit number four, that document being the actual liquor license application, which was filed with the city on May ninth, two thousand and sixteen.
City Manager McDonald, do you have a report? City Manager McDonald, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, your Honor. An application has been received for the transfer of ownership and location of retail liquor license number fifteen from D and D Liquor, Liquors Incorporated, doing business as Doran's Fireside Lounge, and that's located at seventeen forty-five C Y Avenue, and the ownership and location is being transferred to O.C. Casper LLC, doing business as Old Chicago, and it's located at thirty-five eighty East Second Street. Currently, O.C. Casper, Old Chicago operates under the dual, the, the allowed dual licensing holding, licenses of a restaurant and microbrewery. Those would be surrendered with the transfer of this. And as the city attorney reported, the publications and, uh, print publications and web publications have all been made, and the application is in order.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of retail, retail liquor license number fifteen to please approach the lectern.
Good evening, Mayor Zadovall, councilmembers. I'm John Johnson, I've resigned in nineteen seventy-six in the Rust State Court. I'm here on behalf of Old Chicago, O.C. Casper LLC, and we're, we entered into an agreement with Mr. Doran to purchase his license and move it to Old Chicago, and subsequently surrender our other two licenses. Everybody kind of wonders why we're doing this, what the big plan is, and it's pretty straightforward. We plan to do a brand refresh on Old Chicago next year, and this license facilitates that remodel and lets us get away from the brewery that we, we'd like to take that space into our remodels.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions?
I don't drink beer, but, so everybody will still be able to have their selection of beer and win the T-shirt, because that seems to be very important with some of the people I meet there.
Yes, um, actually, well, actually, Old Chicago today currently has thirty caps and has one hundred and ten beers for a bottle and cans, and all that will look pretty much the same, will actually increase caps, the new Old Chicago's have anywhere from thirty-six to forty caps, and so I have a bottle and can selection. Really, the only difference is, right now, and I don't think most people realize this, but when we pour a drink right now, we kind of disappear into the dispensing, our dispensing room is our brewery room, so we go in there to pour a wine or a, or a mixed drink. Beer, I don't know, currently locked, can be poured out in front of the guests through the taps or the can and bottle. So anyway, all of that will be the same, other than when we remodel, we're probably going to move the front door of the restaurant a little bit more to the center of the building and wrap the bar into where the current front door, foyer is, and the brewery room is. Those plans are still being drafted. We did this up in Bozeman last year, did have to buy a license on it. The license, we had to work with it, but it really made for, really leave our environment in our Old Chicago Bozeman town, so we're going to be, bring that design down here and do it. So you walk in the front door, it'll be dining right, bar left, just a little bit, big bar in.
I'm, I'm really glad that you mentioned that renovation, because my question to you was, is this, is this really the license that you want? Because there's, there's stuff written into this full retail where you can't get cross-pollination with underage people and restaurants and all that, and the, the way it seems to me to address those discrepancies with the Liquor Commission is to actually remodel the facility.
Right.
Okay. And you understand all those, and we're not going to give you a, a problem by approving this transfer?
I, no, I don't, I do not believe so.
Okay. All right.
We operate, we operate full retail licenses by our own as well.
Right.
And so, and we're able to, you know, to, to be a part of, so I think that's not going to be a problem with Old Chicago.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the transfer of retail liquor license number fifteen? Please approach the lectern.
Here you are, and of course, there's any other questions? I represent the community recorders in Forest Fireside, Mayor, Council. I'm just actually reinforcing that I'm in favor of this transfer.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Doran?
I love your place. I, I've been there a few times. That's a, that's a cool place.
Thank you a lot, thanks, Mr. Doran.
Thanks. Anyone else to speak in favor of transfer of retail liquor license number fifteen? Speaking in favor? Okay. Anyone to speak in opposition to the transfer of retail liquor license number fifteen? Please approach the lectern. Speaking in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the transfer of retail liquor license number fifteen, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of retail liquor license number fifteen. Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Discussion. Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item seven, A one, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Nordic Sound Incorporated to install and configure video camera equipment in the city's council chambers. Item seven, A two, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ace Sand Blasting and Coating Inc. for the primary clarifier number one recoding project. Item seven, A three, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Grizzly Excavating and Construction LLC for the City of Casper, Casper Family YMCA bid package number two. Item seven, A four, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Grizzly Excavating and Construction LLC for the twenty sixteen miscellaneous sanitary sewer replacements project. Item seven, A five, a resolution authorizing the lease of George Tanny Ball Field and Washington Park Ball Field to Casper Youth Baseball. Item seven, A six, a resolution authorizing an agreement with S W I LLC for the Metro Animal Control Landscaping Project, excuse me, Metro Animal Services Landscaping Project. Item seven, A seven, a resolution authorizing professional services contract with Casper Area Transportation Coalition, Inc., a Wyoming nonprofit corporation, for fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Item seven, A eight, a resolution authorizing a contract with Computer Professionals Unlimited to purchase an in-car video server. Item seven, A nine, a resolution authorizing a contract with Coban Technologies, Inc. to purchase an in-car video server.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles by, yeah, just read those action titles.
Item eight, A one, approving a letter of request from the mayor to, for extension on a Wyoming Business Council grant. Item eight, A two, authorizing the issuance of a taxi cab company license to Thomas Elliott, doing business as Casper Cabs, located at eleven forty-seven East C Street. Item eight, A three, authorizing the appointment of David Maxner to the Casper Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to complete the term of a vacated seat set to expire December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Item eight, A four, authorizing an appointment, authorizing the appointment of new members Will Reese and Nicholas Grooms, and the reappointment of Lisa Burridge to the Downtown Development Authority. Item eight, A five, authorizing the purchase of two new triplex five-thousand-pound forklifts for Wyoming Machinery Company for use by the Events Center section of the Leisure Services Department. Item eight, A six, authorizing the purchase of one new Caterpillar nine fifty M front-end wheel loader for Wyoming Machinery Company for use by the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
Oh, moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your votes. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to council to come forward. We ask that you please state your name and address. Who wants to address council? Welcome, Mr. Giles.
Woody Giles, two ninety East Magnolia, Paradise Valley area. Two weeks ago, you had a, the current two thousand sixteen land use plan meeting at the Wonder Bar, and I was, I attended, and it was kind of informative, but the format was not good to, I guess, meet all the tables or whatever happened. Anyway, I did find some things, and I was, I found it very interesting, and so I went home and, and I printed the two thousand land use plan, and I'd like to go over it page by page. No, actually, I don't know, have you all read it? It's, uh, it's, it's quite the thing, and it's put together kind of well. Had a couple glitches that we dealt with, uh, four years ago, but I don't, the two thousand sixteen plan, is that something that you, are you, did you pay for it in a lump sum, or is it kind of a monthly kind of thing? How is that financed?
Anybody care to answer that one? Thank you, Craig.
Your Honor, we set up the, uh, the professional services contract to pay when they meet certain milestones along the way, so as they get through phase one and they complete that successfully, we would cut them a check and then they'd be on to phase two, and we would make sure that they met those milestones along the way.
Okay. Okay. Because we have a-
That, that was a freebie, by the way.
And because we have a budget crunch and whatnot, I, I'd like to make the suggestion that you take the front page of two thousand and print two thousand sixteen on it and call it good, because, I mean, this, it's a lot of wishful thinking and can't we all just get along, and when you get done reading, you want to kind of sing the National Anthem or something, but, but, you know, it doesn't tell, it doesn't cover the financing of how you want this done, and there's some unrealistic thinking on some aspects, but the new one's going to look just like this one and, and have the same stuff, and, um, so I, I just, you know, stay with what you got, it's, it's as good as it's going to get, you can save some money. But one thing I did learn at that meeting at the Wonder Bar is I asked, you know, as I talk about the water tank on Country Club and its effects, and when the city spends money, you actually, a lot of the time, actually produce a profit. I know this sounds crazy, but it, you can document it, and one example would be that water tank that was city and state money, and I, I asked how much a lot was going for down there in Gosfield Village, and was dumbfounded that, because there was a realtor there at the meeting, and he told me that a lot sells for seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars a lot, because you guys paid for a water tank. Well, you didn't, you took their money and built a tank, and, and if you do the math, I, I sort of did a rough math, that twenty percent of the, of the acreage used for roads and whatnot, um, that leaves, there's a hundred and seven acres, and it's about five, so you take away twenty percent, and it's five lots to an acre, and it, I just used eighty thousand, it's, it's thirty-four million dollars that through your generosity, you made a few people wealthy, and if you could recoup a little bit of that sort of, and you're not going to recoup it from the guy who benefits, you're going to benefit, get it from the person who paid eighty thousand dollars, from him, not from the guy who, who got the money, you know what I mean? He's going to take the money and run. So you made a gift to, to a few individuals, and I, I think we can do better, and, and we're still vetting, uh, this guy, I don't know, that's going to, would come up here and tell you how to diversify your economy, improve all kinds of different conditions, and, you know, just do what you want done, and that won't cost the money that you're spending now to not get it done, and accomplish a lot of things in here, and still not cost you a whole lot, just recoup some of that money that you made, you know, so. I'm ready for the questions that won't come.
Questions or comments for Woody Giles?
Just kind of a comment. Woody, it's, it's a little different. I was, I was just looking at one of the contracts that we signed for some miscellaneous work on sewers and so forth. Urban gutter is quoted in this quote as twenty-two dollars a linear foot. So if you got curb and gutter down both sides of the streets, and you've got asphalt at, let's see, what's asphalt at, going per ton, six hundred and seventy dollars a ton? That's, I don't know, call it a hundred square feet for ducks. So these guys do have to put some money in, and in fact, they do have to make their money back.
But, but the fact remains, if these people who aren't here didn't cough up the money to pay for the tank, they'd be getting nothing, so.
So we wouldn't have any houses to live in.
Well, I'm all for houses, don't get me wrong, but I don't think we have to, like, enrich a few, kind of, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Four thousand dollars, this guy will come and tell you how to do it, and when you go to the store and you buy stuff, that's not a tax, you are getting something for your money. Is that correct?
Yep.
So I think that, that property owners, if, if you had a hundred thousand dollar property and the city did something to make it worth two hundred thousand, and you were to cough up fifty grand, you're still fifty thousand to the good. You following me here?
Yeah.
So you, you wouldn't have to come, oh, I got to pay fifty thou, you know, you'd still be benefiting, so, but some people benefit more than others.
Then we ought to regulate profits.
No, no.
It'd only be a six percent profit, it ought to be a-
No, that's not, no, I'm a free enterprise, capitalism is the only way to be, I'm not a socialist, I'm not communist, I'm, you know, but there's a better way.
I'm kidding.
There's a better way, so. Anything else?
Any more questions? Thank you. I wrote your quote down, Woody. Some people benefit more than others.
Okay?
Dennis.
I didn't come prepared for this. I just wanted to commend Charlie Powell and the people that bring up issues in the, in the back rows here. Tonight was a very interesting meeting, everybody participated, which I haven't seen in a lot of meetings. There's meetings when there's council members that don't say a word, that always makes me wonder, uh, we know they're getting paid, so, anyway, tonight was the exception. Charlie brought up, I, I thought he addressed his goodness issues. I like the fact that he brings up those issues. I think they're pertinent, I think he does his, his research. I just thought it was an exceptional meeting, with one exception.
Uh-oh.
Charlie, I can never hear you, because your mic is way off to the corner.
Oh, damn.
And, uh, at one time admitting to bad hearing, but I'm not, I'm not accepting that anymore, because I hear everybody else.
I'll try to do better, thank you.
No, you do, you do great. Anyway, just a commendation that, that tonight's meeting was exceptional. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Humphrey?
Anyway, just a commendation that tonight's meeting was exceptional. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Humphrey.
Sometimes I'm quiet, so I stay out of trouble.
I was advised that by other council members. You're going through some tough times. Don't press her too hard. Because I did anticipate in giving you a phone call.
Yes, I'm fragile. Don't read me on it.
I really doubt that.
Anyone else? Oh, City Manager.
If I may, your honor, at a point, I'd like to clarify something.
Okay. Let's see if anybody else is in the gallery that wants to address council. Anyone else want to address council? Okay. City Manager, what do you have to clarify?
Your honor, I'd like to go back to the item that Councilman Hiley correctly pointed out, and that's the confusing sentence of the $540,000 one-time cost was included in the budget. It was included in the... It's included in the base numbers that the budget's compared to. And I will go back and correct my report as it's put in to the minister to clarify that. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
It's a confusing statement that could be clearer.
Okay. And when I... When we prepare those minutes, that'll be changed.
That'll be corrected to be a clearer representation.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go around the table, starting with Councilman Powell.
Nothing this evening. I do want to compliment City Manager McDonald, Cassie, the rest of the financial office for all of the work they did on presenting the budget. I think it's a responsible budget that is based on reality. And it's not a pretty reality, but it is what it is. And I think... I think we're going to be okay.
Councilman Hopkins.
Just a couple items. I think you guys had in your handouts tonight a progress report... progress report, excuse me, on West Yellowstone. You can see the progress that's being made out there. And actually, one of the things that people probably don't realize is every meeting down... or every week in the OYD, there's a meeting that's held to let everybody in the OYD know what's transpired this week. And that's been hosted by Paul and his wife at the paint store down there. And of course, he was one of the original guys working on the OYD team and our mayor at one point. So just wanted you guys to know that. And then the other thing, just, I guess, my hats off to Chief King for taking on the Respect Our River campaign. It was responsible for saving a life last Friday.
Good. Councilman Miller.
Thank you, your honor. I too, just the mayor councilman, Powell's things about the city being able to prepare us a good document on where we are with the budget. Having gone through this the first time, it was... It's a lot of information, but it's very simply organized, if that's a good way to put it. So it kind of makes our decisions easier when we have documents that kind of make sense and go with how the information is presented to us. So I do want to give, I guess, a pat on the back to City Manager McDonald and the rest of the city staff who had anything to do with the budget. Because when I came into those meetings, I thought it was going to be pretty rough. You know, you hear a four-hour budgeting meeting and you don't think you're going to have a very good time. But I felt like it was... They were well-run meetings and we had good information. And that's thanks to our staff. The only other thing I have is last week, a number of us participated in on some of the CNFR activities. And again, being fairly newer to the community, I haven't really done much with that. But I do have to say that that's a real gem in our community that to have that event here. And you know, that's kind of one where I look back and say, hey, way to go Casper for us being able to have that there. And I was sitting eating dinner after the rodeo on Thursday night and talked to a number of different people. This wasn't their first time to come do this. You know, they come to CNFR every year. They come stay in our hotels, eat at our restaurants. And I think that's a really neat thing. And when we talk about economic diversification, yeah, that's one small part of it. But we've got to keep supporting those types of activities. And I just want to thank also Councilman Kathy for the work he put in on the... I don't... What is it called? The board or the commission that puts that on? And I was really happy to be invited to see what we do there and how that impacts our city. And that's all. Thank you.
Councilman Humphrey.
It's hard to get used to. I still don't know how to sign my name. You know, I apologize. I missed a couple of meetings, one for a little medical procedure and a little late returning back from vacation. So I don't have a report and I apologize for texting. One of my residents just passed away. So it's going to be an adventurous night. But I'll get up to speed and ready to go. So but I did learn that I love zip lining. So if any of you go, I want to come with you. It's a hoot.
Zip lining? Oh. Yeah. Councilman Pacheco.
Again, just wanted to reiterate my gratitude to V.H. and his staff and Cass and all the work that they put into it. And I know it's easy to look on the outside and make these ideas that take place and things like that and not know exactly what everything that's the work and things that are done. And so it's very vital. And I appreciate what Dennis said. And it is... This was a good meeting and our meetings are good. This is a great group of people to work with. And part of that is that the communication. And though we have lively discussions and we disagree, we still walk out of here and we still respect each other. And that's part of public discourse. And we can disagree. And being able to do that and I think remaining positive in how we do these things and that this downturn isn't the end of the world, that we are going to move forward. We're going to continue to do that stuff with the foresight that we have. And I think that kind of vision and leadership is needed. And I think we need to remain positive, but also be pragmatic. And we also need to be very cognizant of being fiscally responsible. It's very important that we do that. But I'm proud to sit here at this seat and work with these councilmen and the work that you guys do. And so thank you, V.H., for your hard work on the budget. And we're moving in the right direction. So thank you.
Councilman Hiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments coming out of tonight's meeting. First of all, on economic diversity, maybe the city doesn't get enough credit for what it's done. I've been up here and said it before, but this is a totally different town than the town I moved into 19 years ago. And it's a better place to live because of what the people who've sat up here before have done. And, you know, while it's sad to see, like, with the liquor license transfer, that, you know, we'll be losing one good local business, but, you know, another local business is growing. And that's good. We have a lot of new diversity in this community and it's going to continue to be a strength for us as we go through the energy industry hard times. For the city employees, I want to thank you for your patience during this budget process. You know, we've had somebody stand up and say we should cut their pay by 5%. In reality, we have. In the last year, we've not approved a second half of the cost of living adjustments. And this year, we've also not approved a cost of living adjustment. My hope is that the economy is going to give us an opportunity to reward the employees who work so hard for the city with a cost of living adjustment, preferably before the end of the year. But I don't agree with the suggestion that the city employees, for their efforts, deserve to have their pay cut. And that's not something that I'm going to stand by. Buses, same thing. You know what? Once again, this group has just looked at bus routes and plans for changes. And those changes in the bus routes are being implemented so that the buses are operated with greater efficiency in the city. And during hard times, the needs for public transportation is greater, not lesser. You don't cut things you need during hard times. I can't abide by that suggestion. I just want to say that. And finally, to the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they're not paid for what they do. They volunteer a lot of time and I thank them for their work. And I know that tonight, we overruled one of their decisions. And that doesn't mean that I think they're doing poor work. It just means that, you know, in consideration of all things that we heard this evening, we had a different opinion. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
I brought this up in the pre-meeting, but I had a... For a while, I've had this concern about the intersection on the new bypass on Robertson Road and how dangerous it is. And it's proven itself to be dangerous with fatal accident we had a couple days ago. And, you know, this wasn't the first major accident with injury in that intersection. And so unfortunately, this intersection's outside of the city purview. It's a state highway and a county road intersection. So I think we decided that maybe a letter from this council to the state would be appropriate so that maybe they could be pressured to make some changes to make that intersection a little safer. I'm not the only one that shares that concern. I've been contacted by constituents on the west side of town about the same issue. So hopefully, we can get that done and make that a safer intersection. Other than that, I have a meeting with the Convention and Visitors Bureau next week. And that's all I have.
Vice Mayor Kathy.
I would also like to reiterate comments by all of the other council members about what a great job the city manager and his staff have done on the budget. And I would also reiterate that this is a good plan to wade slowly into the water rather than jumping into the deep end, as has been proposed by some of the people. I don't feel that it's our purview at this time to start closing down the amenities. The good things that we have here, we have a lot of good people here. The city manager mentioned that we will be monitoring as we go along the revenues that have come in, which is basically what we've done for the last... For the last year. And actually, it even started before that. We actually put the hiring freeze in in April before... Of April of 2015, before the FY '16 budget even came into effect. So we have been monitoring this for the last 14 months now. And we're on a reasonable path. And we owe a debt of gratitude to the city manager and the city staff for coming up with the numbers, for coming up with some of the plans, and to be able to maintain services for the public and not have to do the drastic pay cuts. Nobody here's grocery bills went down. Nobody's car insurance went down. Nobody's gasoline prices went down. And so we just need to try to help support the community, the city employees, and the businesses within town. And as was brought up, we had a very good attendance at the CNFR. Attendance was down this year, which that was expected. But it was a very good rodeo. A lot of young people were here. A lot of great young people were here. And the people that come here enjoy being in Casper and they spread the good word about Casper to the rest of the country. We had people here from Tennessee, from Mississippi, from Alabama, Louisiana, Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas. And it goes on all the way to the west coast. I just can't even name them all. But they come here because they like it here. They want to come here. This is the height of their sport. And it's a good thing for Casper. And enough about the rodeo. We had a very good Joint Powers Water Board meeting today. Plans are proceeding there for the new water tank out by the airport. That will be continuing on. So hopefully, that will help out as well for some of the economic development, better water in places out around the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I also would like to give kudos to Casia and to V.H. McDonald. And who's that other staff that worked hard on this? Kurt?
Kurt Gunderson.
Okay. I would very much like to publicly acknowledge that work. It's enormously complex and it is... It's real work. It's real work. And we appreciate the level of refinement that we get. Because if you didn't do all that work, then we would be lost. So that is very much appreciated. I also attended the CNFR Government Night, waved my hat to the crowd. Just so you know, the dinner on Monday night, I wore a 1925 Stitz. And it was cool and about this big. Also attended the Regional Water Board meeting today. And things are well in hand. Dave Hill retired. Dave Hill retired. He's the water guru and he's retired. So hopefully, he won't leave town should we have any questions that can only be answered by 20-plus years of institutional memory. So that was good. Anything else? Any... Trying to think of any constituent concerns. I made notes, but I lost them. Okay. Well, we'll just have to bring that up later. Oh, I thought of one. Mosquito spraying is county. So quit calling the city if you want the fog truck to come because that's county. Other than that, I don't know why the county has 0% going to the Health Department. We'll need to figure that one out. But other than that, county does a good job too, and we're all under budget constraints. So the next meetings of City Council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, June 28th, 2016, in the council meeting room. And the regular session council meeting will be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, July 5th, in the council chambers. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record. With Councilman Hiley voting nay, motion passes.
Until next week, actually. Has to stay until the next meeting returns.